I'm here that in the process of opening up this meeting and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all. Thank you. This public hearing, which will run for 30 minutes, and it will run concurrently on two items. The one is the sale of a 2007 DoubleY manufactured home located at Hagens Manufactured Housing, sales and service, 2393 St. John's Road in New Hampshire, Route 18, Littleton, New Hampshire, 03561. Do you want to just explain this to us?
Yeah, do you want me to do the little bit of the background on it?
Whatever, whatever you think.
There's nobody here that wasn't at the first session.
Oh, that's right, I missed the first session, so, given that, whatever you feel you'd like to do.
Okay, so, there was some question just about the process, and so, what we kind of have done here is look into it a little bit. I guess you can probably see that. So, in March 6, 2015, we had a, there was a foreclosure sale held by the mortgage over who sold to Jerry Eames, who paid, he put a $5,000 deposit down, basically on behalf of the town. On April 13, 2015, there was a foreclosure deed that was issued to the town, Littleton, for the sum of $35,000, and we have copies of all these documents. And then between the months of June and July, the manufactured home was renovated and transported to Hagens Manufacturing at a cost of $8,000. Jerry Eames paid that to facilitate the redevelopment of the River District. And during that same time, Mr. Eames expended $8,361 to renovate the manufactured home so that it could be sold. The town reimbursed Mr. Eames for the entire amount of the renovation, and the 2015 War Article number 27, the River District's land acquisition that passed at town meeting, provided the town the authority to acquire the property but not to sell it. So, it was seen that this was an oversight on the town's part, as the way the warrant article was written. And due to that, the town could not sell it, and we had to hold on to it, which required us to pay monthly lot rent as well as winterization for the mobile home. And then this year's warrant article, to correct that, the 2016 War Article 5, the sale of the town-owned property passed, granting the authority of the town to sell the home. The town put that out for sale, and after receiving no interest on its own, we used Hagens to market the property. They received an offer of $39,000 from a buyer. After repaying the funds that were used for the lot rent, the town could take the balance of the remaining funds and put that towards the tax rate. It's up to the select board to really decide how you want to handle that. And we have the foreclosure deed and transfer of funds all attached here to the document in case anybody has any questions.
I missed the first meeting, and was there anything that came out of the first public hearing that needs to be addressed right now?
The first, the first public hearing had two attendees, Mr. Eames and Mr. Hadlock. Mr. Eames spoke in favor of going ahead and accepting the $39,000. Mr. Hadlock had some concerns as to the process, that's why Andrew put together the presentation he just gave.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding the review of the material that the town manager has gone through, or any further comments regarding this?
What money did you get in it?
How much money did we spend?
Put into it.
Oh, put into it. For repairs, was that?
No.
Total. We have a document here, which is pretty small, but let's see if we can... Here we go. So, look here, you can see that the purchase of the building was $35,000 with other fees, $762. The moving of the mobile home was $8,000. Repairs and cleaning, $6,000. Debris removal, $915. Cleaning lay services to get the smoke and other issues out of it was $1,300 approximately. Hosting of the property, $324. We had to pay lot rent to Hagens in the amount of $2,100. Hagens weatherization, $350. And, let's see, rent at, oh, 2016 rent, $1,200. So, total purchase, land and building was $56,098. The sale is, if it, if the purchase and sale goes through, the buyer's financing goes through, that's $39,000 in cash. The estimated land value that we still retain is $45,900. So, that's a net gain to the town of $62,998 and $0.01. We still retain ownership of the lot.
My question was, if you're selling it for $39,000, and you've got $56,000, that's what you put in?
Well, we still own the land, we're just selling the mobile home, so the mobile home is...
Is that what you got in it? That's my question, was how much did you get in it?
Well, it's tough, I guess, to figure out.
Take the land out of it.
Take the land out of it.
Land out of it, and that's what you got in it?
So, take the, so, but we were purchasing land in the mobile home, so that $39,000 can't be, I mean, the $35,000...
So, we've got $17,000 in the land.
That's what we got. Oh, okay, alright.
Anything else, any other questions? Okay, I'm going to move to the second article that's on this public hearing. Any other questions regarding this mobile home can be brought up during this time as well. So, at 5:15, the public hearing will close. Tax map slash lot 91-88, a parcel of .43 acres located at the industrial park, currently leased by Fort 45 VP LLC, Fort 45, I'm sorry, Fort 45. To purchase this property was $7,500. That's basically, do you have anything else you want to say about that?
Just put an image up here so people can visualize where this parcel was.
It's an interesting strip of land, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
At the first public hearing, there was no public input.
Okay, thank you. Andrew, the purchase and sale agreement has me as the, as a member?
Has me as a member, should be a selectman.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move into our regular meeting, and we've already done the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll just move into our regular meeting at this point, and end this public hearing at about 5:15. Okay?
Yeah, he's going to need that open.
Yeah, we have to leave it open for the 30 minutes. So, the first item on the agenda is an appointment by Chief Paul Smith. Chief Smith, would you like to confer?
Sure.
I want to give you some information on an abandoned car.
Sure.
Take a look at it. So, off of Gary's Drive, sitting up on blocks.
So, this week, if you didn't know, is National Volunteer Week. So, there's a presidential proclamation. I'm not asking you to read it, just giving it, giving you the proclamation as an information piece. And as you know, Littleton has a lot of volunteer organizations, and I don't think that our community can be as successful as it is without those volunteers out there. But specifically, the Police Department has our, we have the Volunteers in Food Service Program, and I just wanted to take a couple minutes today just to recognize some of the efforts that they do, because, you know, we couldn't be, we couldn't do the mission that we do without their help. Around 2001, post 9/11, President Bush created the Freedom Corps, and just asking every citizen in the country if they could volunteer in some way. Citizen Corps was created to encapsulate all those different volunteer activities, like bits, volunteers in police service, there's a medical corps, and other things that are in there. But our volunteers here, specifically in Littleton, they do everything from deploying the speed trailer. Just last year, they started walking patrol during some of our big events, like the Halloween Festival, just to be there for information, to help out citizens that are tourists that are coming in, to direct them, and if they need police assistance, they'll call us. Facility maintenance, landscaping, administrative assistance up front at the front office. We have a parade corps, volunteers that are trained and help us out with the parades. Cruiser maintenance, house checks when people are on vacation. They assist with our bike rodeo, like I talked about, the Halloween Festival, researching information that we might need at the Police Department. And generally, on average, they put about 1,400 to 1,600 hours a year towards helping the community. We have about 16 members. And they also do fundraising, and they purchase equipment, and different things for the facility that the officers of the facility might need. One year, they bought, when vehicles didn't come with hands-free devices, they put hands-free devices in all the vehicles. They've done everything from put hot water in the salad core, they paid to have that put in, so that when the officers are washing cars, they have hot water. So, they're a huge asset to the community, and recently, they did a fundraiser, and they had volunteers that volunteered for the volunteers, and I just wanted to list who they were. Linda McNeil, Robert McNeil, Amy Sharp, Ed Brown, Sandy Monroe, Thomas Merrick, Jean-Marie Peterson, Dale Gilbert, Jesse Francis, and Kurt Martin. And again, you know, just recognizing those volunteers is for everything they do for the Police Department, for the community, and that's why I'm here today.
And we second your congratulations to all the volunteer groups. Clearly, we have eight committees or commissions here in town who all have volunteer members functioning with them, so we clearly appreciate the work they do.
Yeah, the town government probably couldn't function as well as it does without the volunteers up there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is town manager's report. We have items on their signage request, Pine Hill Road and School Street intersection is the first item.
So, the signage request, we received a letter from a concerned resident who found that his right-of-way was blocked by people who are visiting some of the trails out on Pine Hill. And you actually can't see the right-of-way, it's like just underneath the trees here. So, we went out there, George Macamara and myself, and I also brought Dave Parkus, because it's probably the bikers who were blocking it, and we walked the area. George agreed that he's going to put some signage out there, "Don't block the drive." And we also just started, we kind of looked around, and Dave had some ideas for future recreational development that he's going to be working on. I don't know if the board had any questions or...
So, did you meet with him, was he there?
He wasn't there.
Wasn't? I guess my own question was, why doesn't he put up a sign himself? That's his property, why doesn't...
The access is actually a access, I believe, that's owned by Littleton Water and Light, and it has a, it has a right-of-way to go to his garage.
Well, it's just a right-of-way.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're going to sign up, and then the chief will, if it's blocked, we'll get the call, he'll have the ability to move a car. But the mountain bikers are also aware of it now too, hopefully.
Oh, Tom's got something, sure.
The only thing I ask is that Ryan's signage test, the one that the board that you recognized and officially has a regulatory item, so that we do have to, fortunately, figure something we have the ability to do.
Okay, that's it, that's it. Thank you. The second item is an appointment procedure item.
With this one, I've gotten some questions coming in regarding appointments in the process for selection, and I think that the board wanted to speak to that.
Yeah, I'll speak to it on behalf of the three of us. As everyone knows, when there are vacancies on committees or commissions, those are posted, and then we have applicants or people who are interested in going on these boards or these commissions to, or committees, to submit their application. We review in two different ways. Tonight's, we have two appointments to make, and these were clearly reviewed by each of us individually with no comment. At our last meeting, we had 22 appointments. I did ask the going-to non-public to discuss this, because we had so many, and I wanted to know for my two colleagues if everybody was okay. And so, there, we did discuss somewhat the appointments and the people that have applied, and we then make a decision for two reasons. We clearly have no obligation to explain our decisions, nor do we intend to. First of all, there's no state requirement to discuss the appointments, the rationale behind them. And secondly, once we would get into, and let's take last meeting as an example, if we discussed each of the 22 appointments, and the rationale associated with those appointments, it could lead to a lot of second guessing on the part of people hearing this, saying, "I know somebody who I think would be even better," you know, and all of this. So, state has no requirement that we need to explain our rationale, and we don't intend to. So, we made the appointments we made, and again, it did come out of a non-public discussion for 15 minutes, and that's basically the procedure that we use here. And that's it. If there's any other questions.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all you have for your town manager's report?
That's all I have for you.
I do have something under other business that I just received. The parade for Memorial Day is on the 30th, which is a Monday, and obviously, the selectmen have been invited in the past to march in that parade, and we have been invited again. Mr. Hudson called me three before yesterday. So, if you're able to be there on the 30th, we would like you there at 11 o'clock. If there's a need for us to drive in a, ride in a car, he would just like to know so we could have a car available for us that would be marked with our names, Board of Selectmen. It would be all that would be on there. But last year, I was the only one that was able to make it, and then I marched with our two state representatives from the area. So, anyway, it's 11 o'clock on the 30th, it lasts about an hour. We marched out to the Amola Bridge, and there's a brief proclamation that's read by the chairman of the board, and there's other speakers there, and it's usually done by 12:30, 1:00, or something like that. So, that's all I have for the business. And we are now under whole business. We have two appointments, a zoning board appointment and an energy conservation committee appointment. I have...
I would move that we appoint David Rochford as a full voting member to the zoning board.
Second.
The three-year term.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. We have John Rothkin, who has applied to be on the Littleton Energy Conservation Committee. Now, we move, we appoint John Rothkin to the Energy Conservation Committee for a one-year term.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. We have no new business. We do have a board of assessors meeting currently, and we have the owner of the property here, Dwight Tebow, right? You heard? Dwight? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he was here. Dwight's not here. Okay.
You're talking about the abate?
Yeah, the abatement is a request for a, I think it's a $510 reduction.
$510 and 19 cents.
Do you want me to just talk about it?
Dwight, go ahead.
Sure, okay. So, the property owner filled out their intent to cut, and once they're done with their cut, they fill out the report of timber cut. The, there's a formula that you use to set the tax rate. After taking it, an arborist took a look at it, it was decided that due to the quality of the timber and the site, that it was $510 and 19 cents too high, and recommended that the select board approve an abating request to reduce his timber tax liability.
Any other questions here? Any motion?
I'm motion that we grant the abatement. It's out of 510.09.
Second and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. We have citizen concerns. Do we have any citizen concerns tonight? I want to point out that the two appointments we made were decisions made by the board, but they are considered to be housekeeping items, which has nothing to do with what we agreed to about a month or so ago to make any board decisions regarding policy at the end of the meeting. So, I meant to say that before, and I forgot. So, are there any citizen concerns? Hearing none, we'll move to...
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more of the way you stand relative to the claims being sold and the reassessments, the whole situation, and the fact that there's a lot going on there, it can have a devastating effect on our community.
Well, I'm not sure we can legally say, but I do have a consultant here, probably does. Look, look, could be explaining to the public about where we're at, and maybe any thoughts you might have on the sale?
My name is Brian Fogg, and we're a transparency, we're a contract assessor, we're a revaluation working at Lashmore, and have done a considerable amount of work in the last several years. It's pretty early in the process to know what's going to happen relative to a buyer for the Connecticut hydro, specifically. The company is a, you know, it's a corporation, it's not required to file any filings or anything like that up until a sale is made. What we do know is that they said they're going to sell their Northeast Generation component, which includes the moving in. We believe that there have been some ticklers put out, and we assume that there are a couple major players who probably have already responded, and may have responded in advance. In other words, provided indication that they might be buyers if they were ready to sell, and think, you know, they'd sell. We know that State of Vermont has formed a group to study the acquisition of the Connecticut River and the Bearfield River, Hydras. And, yes, it's hard, I think that that probably throws a wrench in the process, but there's no guarantee that TransCanada even would entertain a bid by the state of Vermont if they're not required to. It's different than the purchase from TransCanada, the purchase of property in 2005, which was out of a bankruptcy proceeding, where you had a bankruptcy judge that was sort of parked in progress to the acquisition. In this case, TransCanada could pick any bidder they want, and they don't have to explain why or...
Vermont did bid on the last one, didn't they?
Vermont tried to formulate a package, the entire project, they didn't put it together, they didn't get it together. They tried to buy the Bell's Hall, uh, Rockingham tried to buy Bell's Hall separately from the rest of them, and that resulted in all kinds of issues and reports, and after... The state of Vermont, I would assume that the largest concern for town Littleton would be whether or not the state of Vermont would end up being the ultimate buyer. And there's, there are issues that haven't resolved at this moment about that. Among those issues would be, state of Vermont have formal power, which doesn't exist. They have to figure out how to operate in multi jurisdictions, including New Hampshire and Massachusetts. They'd have to figure out how to market the power, and how it fits, and the way the power flows to the grid, and that sort of thing. And they also have to be able to just plain react in time and manner. The last major sale that was similar in size to these Hydras was over named by Mastero, which is part of the Florida Power. They sold their White Plains projects, and it was announced, that is a little bit different case in that Mastero had a large amount of debt, but they announced that they weren't going to make a bond in October of 2013, and by December of 2013, Portfield had announced that they were going to buy the both projects. So, very, very quick it happened, and there are some players, international players, that have the cash, pull the trigger and to make, want to make an acquisition like this happen very quickly. That puts the state of Vermont, in my opinion, at a disadvantage, because just from bureaucratic standpoint, it's very quickly, it's very difficult to act and react that quickly. There are companies in the world that have the cash, and are looking for places quick that like the rules. In that respect, there could be a lot of non-governmental buyers that, that could be players for all of the generation, the law. And one of the components that makes us, that we're wondering how this is going to play out, is that the TransCanada owns Generation, fossil fuel Generation and Hydras as part of the package that they're offering for sale, and that includes, and the wind project that can be made. And we've been debating in our office about whether TransCanada is currently trying to decide, or whether the bidder is trying to put together packages that would either include all fossil fuels with the Hydras, and in order to maximize the total cash, or whether they would try to maximize the selling price of the more valuable on a unit basis contributing to Hydras. We don't know that, I would think the state of Vermont knows that. They were trying, if the company determined that the best outcome for TransCanada was to sell all of Northeast Generation in one package, the state of Vermont would be a player of all. And that's a weak, it is, in my opinion, it's too early to know. And one of the things that I think that the town of Littleton should probably do is to get an opinion, legal opinion, about what the real effect from a taxability standpoint is, if the state of Vermont were to buy. I did some research today, talked to some attorneys that we work with normally, and they have some, they had that same question. So, it wasn't, you know, on the tip of their tongue, the answer to that question of if Vermont were to buy, or the outcome, or what would be the obligation for the host towns in the action? I don't know the answer to that question, I guess I would speculate here at night.
All right, let me ask you a really dumb question here. There is a current value on Bardan, from our perspective, that we just received this summer. There is a current value on Maran in our perspective that we, that we just received this summer. Regardless of who the owner is or the buyer, don't we start with whatever the base estimated value is in terms of negotiating, um, you know, with whoever it's going to be, whether it's TransCanada or whether it's, uh...
Well, I, I wouldn't say that I would, I think we're talking about applicant orders.
Okay.
We were talking about the sale of, of the plant. I doubt that the buyer is going to be, uh, taken into consideration a lot, you know, put a lot of weight on the assessed value of the property.
Oh, that I understand.
But from the standpoint of, of a gold forward value, or let's say it changes tomorrow, then clearly I think that would give us some indication of the market value if it could be broken out and allocated tomorrow. I doubt, I highly doubt that a sale is going to allow us to allocate accurately, uh, a portion of that sale price to more. And, uh, so at a minimum, we're going to see Fifteen Mile Falls, which is Magus County and Moore, which is, as a single license, you're going to have minimum, you see those stuff together. I imagine that all the Connecticut River properties will sell in one month. And probably all the Deerfield River and the Connecticut River projects will sell in one month. All right, the question that we had ongoing debate in our offices, whether they're going to try to fold fossil fuels in that or not and the wind project. So, if there was a billion dollars in value for the Hydras by state, we may have a heck of time determining what, if it ends up private sale through another corporation. We'd have a heck of a time allocating and forgetting the information as to what that allocation might be for Maran coming from the others.
When it was in the newspaper, it said the state of Vermont was approaching the state of New Hampshire and, and I think that's a serious problem because it's a state of New Hampshire, it's simple. It would be like owning Cana Mountain, don't get any revenues from it. So, if the state of Vermont in turn probably would have to pay taxes, but the state of New Hampshire, if they had been to say, well, we could be wiped out. And this is what they were approaching on that, on that front. Then you've got, the other one that's got is, is in real estate. When you have a real estate transfer, you have a transfer tax and the transfer tax in turn comes through and it shows. So, you, you actually do have a basis of what you have on that, but I mean, it doesn't generate anything like this on, but it does give you some kind of a basis.
Could I extend to that point? It, it is possible that Trans, uh, TransCanada's U.S. generation operations could sell its company and you won't see a transfer at all and, uh, on a real unwritten basis. So, uh, it is operated, except for if TransCanada had a boost, operated as an entity, they could sell that LLC and you won't see any property, any property at all. And, uh, and that exacerbates the allocation, um, from what I'm talking about. Generally, you're right, if it's, if it's sold here and sold in Maran, uh, all by itself, uh, you can see a property crash, I think. The, the question about state of Vermont and the state of Hampshire, one of the things I think in this preliminary aspect is there's a lot of folks in the Vermont legislature that have been talking about this subject and, um, and I know the governor has issued a, uh, press release and they formed a group, Hydro Energy Group, and it said that they were going to talk to the regional development, quote, but to my knowledge, I don't think there's been an official, um, sort of inquiry to the state of Hampshire. And, uh, that would be an interesting prospect, I think.
All right, thank you. First, anything else?
Yeah, the other one is, from what I understand, is that Hydro Quebec in turn has filed for a tax abate along with, uh, EverSource, which is bus public service. And they put a tremendous amount of money into their project. And if they go through exactly the same thing that occurs in here from July, or whatever the courts say, when they get into it in here based on your numbers, another thing, we could be also going down the tubes again, uh, if they win. If they, if we lose, then we'll be out of school in Europe.
I'm a little confused about which day is they.
Well, they, they, you have, the community has to file by November, what is it, by March 31st. And they did. They filed for a tax abate.
I know that TransCanada filed for a big, you're saying that...
EverSource did, EverSource, of course. It was 52 people in the community, which wasn't bad for a number of reassessments of the whole town, 52 or 54 or 56, somewhere in there, which is not a great number, but the assessment of that town was down $52 million and a power company went up, I can't remember how many, millions of dollars. And when you have something that goes up and the rest of it goes down, their taxes are going hugely to impact on the flame off from that. And consequently, we're already paying back what was like $10 million.
Six, six million.
Six million and we still owe...
Four something.
Four million or something of this nature on the last one. And if this in turn comes back into pockets again, the people up here could be in exactly the same situation as it was before based on your numbers.
I think that's my issue.
Your concerns are noted, sir. Thank you. Anything else? Hearing nothing else, we will...
I can close my head.
We have to, oh, it's, uh, thank you. I looked at it, it's five-ten, it's not five-twenty-one, so I will ask if there are any final questions on either of the public hearing items that we talked about today. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Our next item on the agenda is...
Not going to vote.
Oh, we have to vote, okay. I need a moment.
I move that we authorize the town manager to proceed with the selling of manufactured home tax map, about 91-88.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
On the second portion.
I move we, uh, authorize the town manager to go ahead and sell the second property, which is tax map, about 91-88, parcel of .43 acres located in industrial park, currently leased by Fort Fairfield BPLLC.
All right, we have a second. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
My original motion, I heard the wrong tax map. It's just selling the manufactured home.
Okay, thank you. We have, uh, one, two, three, we have six sets of minutes to go through. Um, let me, we can move through some of these pretty quickly. The first one is January 18th, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Do you have second or third? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, the second set of minutes is, um, January 22nd. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The third set of minutes is February 11th, 2016. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, the next set of minutes is February 22nd. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Um, I'm fine with that, okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. The next set of minutes is March 7th. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the last set of minutes is March 21st. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
All those, uh, I have a correction here. Um, on the second page, under energy conservation committee, this is just a typo, but just so you can note it, uh, Roth said, um, that, that was, I'm sorry. Some information came to light and to avoid any further concern about the capital improvement program, uh, John chose to resign. Roth said that was five years ago. The word ago is not at the end of the sentence, so it was five years ago. On the alleged road update, um, I want to change the last sentence or sentences, um, to follow in a way. The second last sentence says, Roth said, "Documents were reviewed regarding the road going back to 1976." Then another document 10 years later, and here's what I'm going to add, and I'll give this to you later, but let me read it just, uh, for the record. "Reflecting town acceptance of the road, Dorset explained that legal counsel had rendered that action null and void because municipalities lacked authority to accept roads during the years in question." That needs to be put in there because that clearly is the reason why we didn't accept that road. So, I'll give this to you later or so. Uh, other than that, um, I didn't have any...
Will it be accepted as amended?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Uh, thank you. Uh, we have, uh, no other items here at this board meeting. We have no other decisions to make tonight and we are going into non-public under two RSA's, I think because Brian's here and he's part of this. Brian, what's your last name?
Fogg, FOGG.
FOGG, okay. So, I would entertain a moment to go, entertain a motion to go into non-public under 91A32E, taking Brian Fogg with us.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by, or call vote.
Good, Hennessy, aye.
Skyler Swade, aye.
No, thanks. Uh, we'll take a, a brief break here, uh, for a couple of minutes.
We're going back to the sunning meeting?
Uh, afterward. Do you, do you have something, George, you wanted to go over?
Just some informational stuff, that's all. I can wait and follow you.
Okay. Um, call that abandoned car. I have given that to you as the health inspector. The windows are open, there's rain getting on the inside. It's a place where animals can sleep as well as mosquitoes to breed.
Let me take a look at it.
Yeah, and I brought the VIN number down on there. I think it's on a trail, sitting next to a property because it has two poles there and a little line block.
It's, it's kind of informational. We got him back to the, the town truck that was defeated, which I understand the voters chose not to replace the truck.
Right.
And it also kind of ties in with some talk that's been going on at some of the budget hearings with the, with the budget, excuse me, with the budget committee and the decision of should municipality, let's say, police cars and town trucks be part of a budget or should it be voted on by the voters, you know, the chicken or the yink and bird type of thing? The information I wanted to pass along was that the, uh, the truck we were hoping to replace has in fact, we've lost a motor in the truck and it's going to be about a $10,000 repair. Now, if it was a private business, I, I would think, you know, from my experience being in the private sector, you would, well, that's it, we're not going to put $10,000 into a truck that's going to bring us $3,000, you know, when it comes time to sell it. Uh, but I, I do understand how government and towns, they all work differently and I understand no means no and I have to respect that. But I just kind of wanted to, to bring this to light so people could see, you know, we have a public work supervisor that's paying very good money, we have a town manager that's being paid very good money. And it'd be the same at the police department, you know, maybe decisions of this nature could almost be looked at people that deal with this stuff every day, you know, worked into a budget. That would be, this is one time that it would have been advantageous. But I just wanted to make, you know, people from Channel Two and the, you know, so I can aware that this is, this kind of came, it wasn't a wish list for a new truck, it was something that we, we anticipated this and there wasn't much we could do with such cross our fingers and that didn't work this time. But, uh, that was it, that was the information I wanted to share.
Okay. You know, one of the, um, elements in the Senate, Senate Bill Two model that we, we live under here is that, um, and you're well aware of this because you've sat through budget committee meetings, there is this attraction of pulling things out of the budget to keep the town budget looking reasonable and putting it on the warrant articles, as separate warrant articles, under the democratic theory of let the town make the decision. Um, I don't know if under the old town model, we would have moved that truck into a warrant article anyway, because sometimes that would happen, but clearly there's this ongoing debate statewide, because it appears in the paper periodically, regarding the Senate Bill Two model that we, we as a town and other towns are under, regarding this very item of, of letting, putting it into the budget. Now, it could have gone into the budget and we could have lost, you know, the budget, that, which is, which is the issue here, but it clearly is a, a weakness in that model or something that wasn't foreseen because, uh, we can also be accused of, at points, putting the budget below the, the default. Um, and so, or the default below the budget, you know, so it's not supposed to go that way, but that's the way it's gone. So, um, your, your concern is well, well taken.
Well, I think there's, I think there ought to be a lesson learned, uh, to, to everyone who's, who's listening or are going to read about this, um, and particularly the budget committee. George, you're right and, and I know Paul Smith has, has said before that the, the police cruisers are a part of the department, is part of what they do. Their replacement ought to be a budget item. And I agree with that and I would hope that the budget committee would learn a lesson from this and consider that when those requests come in in the future. In the event that, that one department or another goes too far, that, that's where the budget committee has to be stingy too. But given the condition this truck was in, and they certainly had the ability to ask you for more details about it, it should have been part of their consideration. And it, it's too bad that we're going to put $10,000 into a vehicle we're going to get three out of. That's plain stupid.
We will, uh, we will get through this, there's no doubt.
Yeah.
And hopefully we'll get two to three years now out of, more years out of this truck. In, in 2008, they purchased two trucks and one of them was in better condition than the other. And, uh, so hopefully next year, when the 550 comes back up, this, well, actually we weren't purchased the same year, one was one year behind the other, but they were the same model year. Uh, number three is that in to show some of the symptoms that number eight, the truck that just lost the motor, was shown a year ago. So, I'm sure that, uh, you know, from the voters or to the budget, however we decide to move forward in 2017, you know, we can just swap the two around and hopefully get another two to three years.
I'm not saying the budget committee made a mistake, uh, but I, I think this kind of thing is an example of perhaps they ought to think about and ask some more questions next time comes around.
Good, thank you. We're still on break here, but we are going into non-public, so, um, thank you for all for coming tonight.